So just to kind of go over what the purpose of tonight is. We have a town meeting coming up on Friday for those who aren't aware. I'm assuming you are aware because you're here. My name's Tom Morali. I'm the town moderator. What we're going to do tonight, we're going to go through the town meeting warrant. And the goal is to sort of get into the process of what each article that's on the warrant is going to do. I've seen some comments on Facebook, what a yes vote would do, what a no vote would do. That sort of thing. Just to give people an idea of what it is they're being asked to vote for. The goal of tonight is not to provide a platform for people to advocate one way or another for the town. For the town meeting articles. It's mainly to discuss the facts of what, what is going to happen, what, what these questions are. We have an entire town meeting for people to advocate for their articles or against these articles. So I wanted to save any discussion of that. You know, is this a good idea? Is this not a good idea for the town meeting itself tonight? Purely just information. So that being said, I'm going to direct your attention to the we're going to go basically article by article. So I'm trying to try to share my screen here. And if you, if you have a question and you need, please feel free to to use the raise hand function. So let's go, the first article on the warrant is to see if the town will vote that any motion or amendment to increase any monetary articles or line items as proposed by the finance committee presented at this town meeting shall be out of order. So so this article. The reason we discuss this first and foremost is basically to lay down the notion that the finance committee who has discussed these articles at length, the financial ones, will have a say over over whether or not they think that these should be passed. The basically think of it like this, the mend and town government, like the federal government has branches, right? The select board is collectively the executive branch of the president. You can view town meeting itself, the institution as the as the legislature, we're all legislators in the town amendment, think of that, we're all congressmen. And the finance committee is supposed to act as a check on the executive branch, so to speak. It's the legislative branches ways and means committee. They look at the financial articles presented and they, their job is to basically say whether or not to but they think it's a good idea. So this article is first and foremost, because we established that being of every town meeting that they should have a say. And I think that's very important. That that's something that is discussed now. I mean, obviously, coming in can, can vote no, we don't want them to weigh in, but we generally put that first and foremost to, to at least give the option of town meeting to do so. And the motion for that is, is just going to be as it's basically as it's laid out on the, on the town meeting warrant. So article two is another sort of housekeeping article. I'm like bouncing back and forth between sharing screen and talking about what's on the screen. So the second article here. See if town will vote that fix the salaries and compensations of the elected officials of the talent or take any other action relative there too. So this is one that basically, like as I said, we're the legislature here in the town amend in at town meeting. Everything. Everything, every money's expended, has to be voted on by the town. Given out with the town meeting warrant, you're going to get something called the FinCom book. That will basically show what the numbers themselves are and just pulling it up right now. So you can see here. The salaries of the officials, the town clerk, conservation commission, planning, zoning, everyone who is everyone who is hired by the town. This is basically our new fiscal year starts in July. It runs from July to June, so anything voted on at town meeting will take effect in July. It is to make sure there's enough money in the budget to pay people. In this book, not only is the, the salary is going to be there, but every single every single item, that financial item that makes up the town's budget. Okay, any questions on that? All right, moving on. Article three, to see if the town will vote to raise inappropriate and or transfer some money from available funds to pay bills of a prior year. So bills of a prior year, basically, as I said, the fiscal year runs from July to June. Every year in the
Tom, I can give you a little bit of specifics on that if you want.
Yeah, absolutely. So first of all, like before we go into the specifics, I just, this article will need to be passed by seven eighths. That's, that's the state law. Basically, seven eighths of the town meeting will need to pass this and it's to pay bills from last year. Now, Mr. Morali, select me, select board member, if you could give
This is being recorded, right?
Yes, it is.
So I haven't recorded that you actually called me, Mr. Morali?
I do, I do.
That's great. Let me, can I share my screen?
Um, yeah, absolutely. If it will let you.
Let's see. Nope, not that one. Still not that one. Sorry about that.
So I have, I have that the amount that we're voting on is 20,487 to pay, to pay bills of a prior year in the prior year is from FY23 for Chubb Insurance?
Right, that's what I was trying to bring up. It is, it's 20,487. And simply put, it was our disability insurance for all of our employees. And the reason it didn't get paid within the fiscal year is the bill didn't come in until after the end of the fiscal year. So we can't pay it, you know. After 15 days at the end of the fiscal year, we can't pay it until we have a meeting like this. And, and frankly, we would normally do it, would have done last fall. But at the special town meeting, but we still didn't have that bill. So it was, it was just our insurance provider hadn't sent the bill to us until after the fall town meeting. So, and again, we didn't have the amount, so it's, it's, it's not an unusual thing. It's why this is allowed to happen. But it's 20,487 and it was for, it had been in the budget. But again, the bill didn't come in, it didn't get paid, that money went down to free cash. So now we have it now to pay it. So.
I'm sorry, um, I realized a mistake I made. The first article I had in my head that it was, it was that we were going to basically rule that any, anything that didn't get finance committee approval would be ruled out order. It's not that, it's anything that doesn't state where the funding source comes from is ruled out. What the finance committee need to weigh in is actually a bylaw. It doesn't need to be established at every town meeting. This one, the article one, what we're voting on is, is going to be that in order for something to be considered a valid motion, it needs to state where the money is coming from. Because otherwise, you know, we could say, hey, we want to pay $800,000 for, you know, like water slides and the town will have to pay $100,000 for water slides and that might not have a funding source for it. And then, you know, then we, we have kind of a financial crisis. But that being said, you'll notice a lot of these motions to say, like this one says, I move the town vote to transfer 20,487 from free cash, free cash is basically the town's money that has available to pay for things for the upcoming fiscal year after we, you know, after we pay for things, after we get our, our tax valuations and that sort of thing. So that's basically the money we have available to, to pay for expenses for the upcoming fiscal year. And there are other accounts too, that you'll see various things being being transferred from, but, but that's what article one was, not, not what I had said earlier. That was a mistake and I apologize. So any questions on either article one revised or the or the or the article three bills of a prior year? No? Okay. Moving on. So article four. So this is for debt and interest charges, Mr. Chair, would you like to discuss this?
Well, article four is the budget.
Okay. Yeah, well, article four says to defray 20 FY25 charge, okay, including debt and interest. So article four is the budget.
Article four is the budget.
Okay, yeah.
And we did, we had the finance committee hearing last week that approved the budget. And do you have, can you bring the, the book up on the screen that was sent?
One sec. Okay. I have the book here.
Right, so basically, and this will be passed out at town meeting, but you can see if you scroll to the top. It, it breaks it down so that the total raised by taxes, right? 20 million, 79,061. It's a, it's a balanced budget. Scroll all the way down to the bottom, if you go down to the last page.
Let me discuss what the total number of the budget is, is that where that is?
Yes, that's what I'm, if you scroll, if you open the book up and scroll down to the, to the last page. Nope.
Wait, I thought I just had it. To where the pie chart is, right?
You can, that's one place to look at it. So you go back up to the pie chart page.
Okay. Okay.
There it is.
Budget is 23,980,888 dollars. That's just going to be voted on at the meeting.
And, and those wondering, normally, the finance committee will read it department by department. And if anyone has an issue about a particular department's budget, they can say, hold. We'll go through the rest of it, we'll approve the rest of it. And then you'll be, people will be able to ask specific questions about specific line items within that, within that particular department. But that's how we handle, handle the budget and that's article four.
And so, yeah, again, if you want to discuss specific items, you, you have the opportunity to do so. Now, moving on, unless there's a question about the budget. Does anyone have a question about the budget process? All right, moving on. Okay, so I used to say that next few articles, articles five through nine, and then also 11, 12 and 14 are what's called the consent calendar. What that states is basically we, we take all these articles which are concerned, either housekeeping articles are, they're very very similar, very kind of automatic articles that we, we go through every year and have to, to take a vote on. And we basically treat them as, as one item. And with a simple yes or no. And so that's just called a consent calendar. So those articles really quickly.
You want me to walk through these, Tom, and just explain each one of them?
Well, I'm just going to share the articles. So it's article five, to see if the town will vote to appropriate funds provided to the town. Chapter 90 money. Six, which is to appropriate transfer from available sources, some money to fund the FY25 portion of the assessors cyclical inspection program. Seven, which is to fund a sum of money to fund the FY25 portion of the update valuation account. Eight, which is to transfer some money from funds for, for police department, state, federal matching grants. Nine, which is similar thing to the others, but the opioid, national opioid settlement program. 11 to see if we'll transfer money from the community preservation accounts to fund the FY25 police station debt exclusion. And then 12, which is the basically taking CPA, the CPA percentages that we have every single year. And 14, which is the amended five-year land use program. Those are the ones we're all going to be, that we're going to treat as part of the consent calendar. Do you want to just speak to the general idea of the of the, the ones that are transfers? And then we can, we can talk more specifically about the CPA ones.
Okay, which article you're asking about?
So four through, four through nine are, or sorry, five through nine are are all monies that are being transferred or basically the town is appropriating funds or accepting funds?
Yeah, well, basically, five, which is again, talks about chapter 90 money, which comes from the state for the roads. Chapter, articles six and seven have to do with the assessors. And that's money that we spend every year to do basically do an inspection, because every year, we don't inspect every property every year. The assessors inspect the properties on a three-year rotating basis. So each year, we have this money that's appropriated to handle that. So it's called the cyclical inspection program. And that's, again, like I said, articles six and seven, cyclical inspection and update valuation. Article eight, again, is state and federal granting money, grant money, which means that the police department receives grants through the state and the federal government. And they require a local contribution. So we take the $3,500 that's in there that we may or may not need for grant, for matching grant money. This year at the Mass Municipal Association meeting, I met with Quentin Palfrey along with our vice chair, Elena Brugos. And the state this year actually set up a department which is providing state money to give to the towns for federal grants. So there is a possibility that we may even be able to get some money from the state for the federal grants. And I don't want to, I don't want to steal Phil Sibley's thunder or anybody else. But, you know, the big issue a lot of people are tuning into is, is to talk about this senior center that we're going to put on the ballot. And one of the important pieces of information people should know is that we have been working with our, our congressman. Congressman Oshin Klos and also Senator Markey's office. And they have, we started the earmark process, so it's, there's a strong possibility that a significant amount of the money that is going to, we're going to spend for this senior center could be paid through this federal earmark process. Now, that's not a guarantee, but I know we're scrambling around, we've been scrambling around these last few days, providing information that, that Phil and, and the rest of the committee have all compiled to send it to the federal government, to the, to our legislators, federal legislators. And if there's a, and if there is a grant, grant component or a matching component required, Quentin Palfrey's office and the state will help us with that. But I know I'm digressing a little bit. Article eight is just matching money, matching grant money we need to come up with when we get money from the federal government or the state government. So that's article eight. Article nine, again, this is, this is money giving, given to the town through a national opioid settlement. And it's being given to the town, but the voters have to vote to accept it. So this is just an article that accepts that money as it's done the last, the last, last year and years before that.
You know, what happens, what happens if it's, if they vote no?
What happens if, what if people don't vote to accept it?
Yeah, does it just kind of sit there and wait until the next time or does it go away?
Well, no, we just, no, we lose it. We have to vote to accept it. It's, and it's, it's a no-brainer, right? But again, it's, it's, it's the law. So in other words, the, the, the federal government can't give us the money if we won't accept it. So obviously, we're going to accept it, right? But we have to vote it. So.
Right, right. Now, I know Anne Mazur is, is Anne Mazur here?
She certainly is.
I'm here.
Okay, would you like to briefly speak to article 11, 12, and 14?
Sure.
Yeah.
Go on.
And I guess 13 as well, it's not part of the consent calendar, but we can, we can speak to these items at once, I think.
All right. So the police debt is for the new police station and we can use CPA funds because, which are paying for a third of the police station because it was adapted for use of an old building, so we can use historical funds. And so why CPA funds are used for the police station debt. And then article 12 is an estimate of the funds that will be coming into CPA through the town and the state match. And then dividing them up into the categories that are required by the state. Article 13 is to pay a part-time affordable housing coordinator, which we're sharing with other towns. We, this is the second year that we've had this person. And the first year there was a grant and it was free and the second year we're paying, but we, we're actually paying for half the salary because we paid for half the salary last year and half this year. That is. And then the five-year land use program is just something that is in the bylaws and we have to vote on it every year. And just the goal for the land is committing.
Thank you, thank you. Any questions on any of those?
I, I had one question.
Yep.
Just out of curiosity, just because I couldn't find it, what is the current balance in the CPA fund? You know, maybe before you get, because I've noticed that a lot of there are a lot of amounts coming from CPA and there's the, obviously, the conservation easement that had money going forward. I was just curious what the balance was before maybe the fiscal year 25 revenues.
Do we even answer on that?
Yeah, 4.1 million.
Okay, great, thank you.
Now, what, what are, what can CPA funds be used for?
They can be used for historical preservation, which is really helpful for men and because we have a lot of old buildings that the town owns, like the Taff Library, the town hall and, you know, other historical buildings. It can be used for open space preservation, affordable housing and recreation.
Thank you.
And just one thing I'd add is the reason that the CPA budget is so healthy is because almost every project that we do, we get grant funding from somewhere or we work with other partners. And, you know, we have a network of people that help us on these projects.
Perfect, thank you very much. I'm, I'm going to jump back to article article 10, which is the one that wasn't in the consent calendar we missed. To transfer $50,000 from free cash to the FY24 finance committee reserve fund account. Mr. Chair, do you, would you be able to speak to that? Like, what is the finance committee reserve account?
Sure. Throughout the year, if there's a, if there's an emergency of some type with a combined vote of the select board and the finance committee, we can move cash to cover a shortfall somewhere. And this is, this is something we do every year where we take $50,000 out of free cash and then we put it into this FinCom reserve. So it's a reserve fund, so that we have the flexibility to pay small amounts without having to go to a special town meeting. So basically, we set this money up at the beginning of the fiscal year. And that, that gives us $50,000 in reserve in case something happens between July 1st and usually November, when we have the special town meeting. And then in November, depending on if, if we, if we have the need to replenish it, we can, we can revisit it again. But that's what it is. It's just a, basically moving it from someplace that's inaccessible except at a town meeting to someplace that is accessible with a vote of the select board and the finance committee combined. So it's something that is not accounted for within the line item budget. That's give us, like I said, it's an emergency fund, you know.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, so up next, we have article 15, which is to accept the general law to establish an enterprise fund for which is to establish an enterprise fund for municipal subscriber curbside trash and recycling services. Yes, is this, would this be a new enterprise fund?
Yes, it's, 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 it's a change in the way that we're doing. This is something that we had suggested a few years ago. And basically, the way it works right now, people pay their trash bills and that money, you know, goes into an account to pay for trash and recycling costs. And what would happen is at the end of the year, as it was left over, it would go down to the general fund. And then we'd have to reappropriate it again the next year. Sometimes we eat, we collected too much. And instead of it staying focused on paying for trash, it would go into the general fund. It could be used for a lot of different things. So this is a way of making sure that the money that the rate payers pay for trash actually pays for So this is a way of making sure that the money that the rate payers pay for trash actually pays for trash. And the way that happens is, it goes into an enterprise fund, which means the money stays in that fund.
It kind of operates as its own separate business essentially.
Well, wha- what it does is, rather than forcing us to put it into free cash a- at the end of the year, and put it into the general fund where it can be used for other things, um, this way it, it earmarks this money for what it was actually intended for, for trash. And it stays in there, so if there's an increase in tonnage or something else, instead of there being a shortage, we have to take from somewhere else, or an overage where we'd be, you know, it would get appropriated somewhere else, this way it stays focused in the enterprise fund to pay for trash.
Perfect, thank you. Um, any questions on that? Okay, moving on, sixteen.
And this, this goes with fifteen, sixteen actually puts the money into the uh, enterprise fund. So fif- sixteen, fifteen, sixteen goes on fifteen.
Okay, so it's just the amount to establish the fund, and from then on, it should be self-sustaining?
Right, one of them is to establish the fund, the next one is to move the fund, the money into the fund.
Perfect, okay.
Hey Mike, can I ask one question?
Sure.
Um, just out of curiosity, so we obviously then don't technically know what the, the, the price of uh, the trash and recycling is for the year until kinda the very end, is that correct?
Uh, no, not exactly. We have a contract, um, you know, we have the trash bill, which is based on the maximum tonnage. And the reason we don't know the exact amount is there are tipping fees, right? Which is, which is what it actually costs to get rid of the trash up at Wheel Abraider, but that's based on tonnage. So we don't, we don't have, we won't know how much it's gonna cost us to actually get rid of the trash until we actually get rid of it.
So, but in that revenue account, in that revenue account that you're creating, in theory, you wouldn't expect that account to grow year over year, you would think that if.
Well, no, actually, well, it depends. I, I mean, the, the reality is, what's happened is, in other words, if, if everybody's trash barrels um, are allowed, everybody's allowed to get rid of a certain amount of trash, right? So if it turns out that uh, people do more recycling and get rid of less, then the tipping fees are actually less than what we thought they would be. So we may have actually collected more money in the trash bills than what it actually cost us to uh, get rid of the trash. So in other words, we could actually collect more than we actually spend. Um, but it usually evens out. The problem is this, then what happens at other times, uh, we get rid of more than what we expected. And then it costs us more money. So this is a way to keep it there, so that we know that the money that we're collecting for trash just goes for trash, and doesn't get spent for anything else.
Perfect. Any other, any other questions on this? All right, anyways, I'm gonna move on to the next one. Article eighteen, to move the town vote to set the limits on the revolving funds.
Well, I think, I think we didn't, we still have to talk about seventeen, which is the enterprise fund.
Yep, 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 uh, oh, Article seventeen, enterprise fund for water.
So uh, back in the nineteen forties, um, a group of about a hundred and fifty houses uh, down on the south end of town actually get tied in um, with town water from Hope Dale. It was Milford initially, and now it's, it's Hope Dale. So what happens is, those rate payers um, basically pay the town of Menden, and then the town of Menden pays for uh, pays the town of Hope Dale for the water. And uh, it's the same thing as trash, but instead of it being all of the trash rate payers, in this case, it's just the water rate payers. And this money is put into an enterprise fund that's paid for by the rate, by the, by the water users to pay for um, pay the cost of the water.
All right, thank you. Any questions on that? Moving on, Article eighteen, revolving funds, and this article, as you can see, sets limits on, on various different revolving funds. Um, these have to be set every year. Now, what's the difference between revolving fund and enterprise fund?
Well, the enterprise fund um, is a, a particular account uh, that's for a specific purpose. Like I said, we have an enterprise fund now, for, we're gonna have one for trash, and we've had one for water. These revolving funds, um, again, are accounts where um, money goes into and comes out of within the same year. I mean, everything else that we do, we appropriate money for the budget. And then what happens is, any money we collect during the year um, goes into the general fund. And it, and it can't be taken out of the general fund without um, without a town meeting vote. With a revolving fund, what it does, it allows us to collect money within a particular fiscal year, and put it into this revolving fund, and then spend the money back out of that account. And these, these revolving funds put limits on each one of them. So that um, you know, anything that goes over that revolving amount would go into the general fund. So this is, this is a mechanism for the, for money, in other words, for the library, all of these, like, it's the planning board. Uh, when somebody goes in front of the planning board and they, they have to pay fees for inspections and uh, you know, and for an engineer to review fund plans and everything. What happens is, the money gets paid in, it goes into the revolving fund, and then it can be, again, expended um, for the same purpose it was collected. Same thing with parks, fire, all of these different, you know, title fire, which is septic.
Awesome. Um, do we have any other, do we have any questions on this? All right, moving on. Um, Article nineteen, oh, no, yeah, nineteen, just making sure I didn't skip on my class time. Um, to move thirty-five thousand dollars from free cash to fund retirement payouts from municipal employees.
Right, in this, in this case, we have, we have some longtime employees that are retiring, they have accrued vacation time and, and benefits that, that they need to cash out. So we have to move it from free cash, which again, money which was left over from last fiscal year, um, so that we can actually pay the, pay these contractually obligated amounts.
Okay, thank you. Any, any uh, questions? Okay. All right, Article twenty, two hundred fifty thousand dollars from sale of town-owned land account to undertake road improvement capital projects.
Yes, well, um, for this one, anyone who has driven around on Menden's Road know that we have, the, the roads are in need of repair. And although we have a certain amount of money that the state gives us under Chapter ninety to help us repair the roads, you know, that's not enough, and everybody uh, is probably aware of the, the culvert down on Providence Road, where Spring Brook uh, overflowed the banks three times this year and had to be repaired. So what we've done is, um, you know, we have a, a land sale account where we, we actually um, from time to time, we'll, we'll sell land. And in this case, we had, we're taking two hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of that account and putting it into uh, into this uh, road improvement projects, so that we can specifically um, spend more money on fixing, um, fixing some of the more uh, severe issues that we have within the, in the roads.
All right. Uh, sorry about that, my dog got some styrofoam, I had to get it out of her mouth. Um, Article twenty-one, and oh, um, any questions about Article twenty? Okay, Article twenty-one is uh, something to do with the senior center, senior community center. I don't, I don't anticipate this article being very uh, causing a lot of discussions, so let's move on. I'm just joking. Uh, all right, so Article twenty-one is um, move in a, and uh, appropriate and borrow thirteen million, two hundred thousand dollars to the design and construction of the Menden Senior Community Center. Including incidental costs, be, it describes the, the parcel of land, this is going to be three North Avenue, um, which is, is, you know, the top of the hill. Um, right, right across from Clough, am I, am I correct in saying that? I know part of that property isn't the town, part, part of the property at the top of the hill isn't the towns, and that's not what we're talking about. We're talking about the land right across from Clough Street, correct?
This is, this is uh, the, one-third of uh, of a piece of land that starts um, pretty much across from the convenience store, you know, on, on uh, on Menden Street there. And, you know, there used to be a house right on the corner, and that, that particular piece on the corner is privately owned. But there's a big piece that was the apple orchard, and it was divided into three sections. The first one was, was reserved for future municipal use. The middle section was um, basically always gonna be conservation land, and the bottom piece, um, while we put solar panels on the back of it, and the front piece of it down, and this is now across from the end zone, um, was sold to a, a private company who was actually building um, some, a storage facility there. But this is specifically the, the, you're right, Tom, the piece at the top of the hill, which was uh, purchased, you know, more than twenty years ago for future municipal use, is now uh, we're proposing be used for at least part of the land to use for municipal use of this um, senior and um, community center. And just, I know there's been a couple of questions about, why is it called senior and community center? Um, well, it's, it, just like the current senior center, it's, it's used for a lot of different reasons in the community. But um, when we started to explore the possibility of getting federal funding or a federal earmark, um, it, we were advised that, that um, broadening the name of it um, would actually garner, garner us a better opportunity to get some of this federal earmark money. So although this is certainly built, being built for the benefit of Menden senior citizens, um, just like the current center, you know, the, you know, sometimes it's, it's not used at night, and other times that uh, other groups, other groups within the, within the community can use it. And uh, I'm gonna ask, I don't know, Phil Sibley, or that maybe another member of the committee of the, of the uh, senior citizen community.
Before we, we jump into that, you, can I just ask one, one quick, um, one question? Um, so the, in the article, it, it talks about a debt exclusion. Now, can you uh, explain, now, i- is a debt exclusion like an override?
Well, it is, it is an override, and in, in order to explain, you have to understand what an override is. Really, um, you know, several years ago, uh, back in the nineteen eighties, this Commonwealth of Massachusetts passed Proposition Four and a Half, which said that municipality like us could not uh, vote to increase uh, our our tax revenues more than two and a half percent without a uh, a, a vote, an override vote. And which that meant was um, a vote both at town meeting and at the ballot, and it has to pass in both places. So that two and a half limit, um, it was put in there to actually slow, slow the growth of real estate taxes. Um, there are two types of overrides. There's one like this, which is a debt exclusion, which means that um, it's temporary. I mean, we actually bought the land that we now wanna build on with a debt exclusion, because we passed it, and we, we paid that, paid that debt off over twenty years. And then after twenty years, um, that debt came off. So in other words, it's not permanent. And it's made to, and it, and it requires us to be focused on a particular item. So in other words, we can't do a bait and switch, where we pass it for this reason and spend the money on something else.
No, no, exclusion going to be for the full, sorry, sorry to interrupt, but you said this has to be passed at both the town meeting and at the ballot, so after town meeting, assuming this passes, this will go to a ballot vote.
Right.
At the annual election, right?
Now, is this, and, and there's, there's a couple of scenarios that could happen. It could pass at the town meeting and pass at the ballot, and then we'll proceed. Um, it could fail at the town meeting and pass at the ballot. And then we would have to decide, the board, the select board would decide if we were gonna go back to another town meeting to try again at town meeting, or we would just drop it. Um, it's also possible that it could pass at town meeting and fail at the ballot. And then in that case, we'd have to do the same thing. We'd have to decide, do we just, you know, bring it back to the ballot a second time, or do we just let it fail? Um, so in other words, the, the reason that's, so it's important for everybody to show up, whether you are in favor of it or not, to make sure that you make your, your, your voice heard and vote both at the town meeting and at the ballot uh, ten days later.
Now, is the debt exclusion going to be for this full thirteen million?
Yes, thirteen-two. That's, that's what's, just like it says on the article.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Now, and just to finish my statement, the other type of a two and a half override is a permanent override, which is um, an op- often called an operational override, where um, you know, we, we, we're up against a situation where we simply cannot um, you know, the, the, the Finance Committee and the Select Board um, have just come up with the idea that all the contractual obligations and the costs of running the town are simply more than what we can do with just a two and a half uh, percent increase in new growth. So in that case, we'd go for an operational override, where we'd basically ask everybody to allow us to increase taxes more than two and a half percent uh, for that particular year. And that's not like a debt exclusion like this that eventually goes away, that would be permanent, where it would have gone up that much, more than two and a half, and it would stay there year after year. But that's not what we're talking about here. We're talking about the first type, which is a debt exclusion, where we would vote to um, to increase this. And, and what we've come up with is um, based on, on what we're paying now compared to last year's taxes, uh, somebody who's, who's assessed value of the house, which is typically lower than what it's actually worth, um, is, is at five hundred thousand, um, their total tax bill would go up about a hundred and fifty dollars um, for the whole year, or figure it out roughly thirty-eight bucks uh, a quarter to pay for this over the life of the uh, the life of the, of the vote. So, I, I think that's, that's all I have to add, maybe Phil or someone else wants to.
Yeah, I would, um, I know. Well, yeah, absolutely, we have a question?
I had one question that we're kinda related, one, how long is the debt exclusion for?
Twenty years.
Okay, and I guess my second question is, is, and maybe it's a question for Phil, well, how did we go in, in that first, I think at the first meeting? Um, and I only saw it like on YouTube, the amount was much higher than the one fifty. And so now, I think it was more like three fifty for five hundred, now we're saying one fifty for five hundred. What was, what was the, what caused the discrepancy, and how confident are we in the one fifty? Cuz to be fair, I think you probably have a contingent of people that will say, you know, maybe I won't vote yes at, you know, if my taxes are going up six hundred dollars for it, but at three hundred dollars, I will. So how confident are we in the lower amount?
Well, we're very confident. We weren't, and again, the initial number was an initial estimate, because it, it's not easy to sort everything out. And it's important to know that there are other debt exclusions that are coming off this year. So basically, it's just the net number. So the original number, which is, which was basically twice what this one fifty was, was before we had actually been able to calculate um, exactly uh, what debt was coming off. And the other issue is, interest rates vary, they go up and down. And our, our uh, Finance Director was researching um, exactly where we would, could get the money from. In other words, who would give us the bonds and what interest rates it was gonna come at? And she was be, be able to be pretty creative. Um, also, you know, we have a good bond rating. So the closer we get, the closer that we got to taking the vote, uh, the more accurate and the bit, we got, and the better terms we got. So, again, it was like everything else. We start off with an estimate and we hone in on it.
Are you saying, but Cass, just real quick, are you saying that the one fifty per five hundred though is actually a net number that we have a debt exclusion coming off? So therefore, it kinda would be, like in others, if that debt exclusion was causing someone's um, taxes to be up two hundred, it's coming off so that you're netting the one fifty, that it's only.
I just, I just want, I have, see Elena Brugos from the Select Board has her hand up, are you, are you going to speak to this?
Yeah, I just, I, yeah, I wanted to, to clarify at least one point, which is that it is a thirty-year debt exclusion, not a twenty-year, if you, if you look at the, the wording, so that is part of the change from the original estimate, is that it's a thirty-year.
It would spread out more now.
It's spread out more and 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 right. And also to answer the point, um, right, uh there, right, that there are the debts coming off as uh Mr. Marali said, um, I know that there um our finance director has uh prepared some graphs and I don't know if um if Phil is going to be sharing those. I think there are different versions of of the graph showing uh, you know, but the the debt is falling off. So the right, the amount that we'll be paying is for the next few years. And then the 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 as the debt falls off, it's sort of the I guess the amount over what we're paying will shift as more debt comes off. But, yeah.
Um Phil, do you have, um Phil's hand does up then uh Mike Goddard from the Select Board. Um Phil, do you would you like to speak to this?
Continue to add, we do have a chart that will show when the debt and debt begins to fall off. If you look at level funding.
I'm I'm sorry, Phil, you're very muffled.
Hey, can you hear me? Am I blocking my mic?
Yeah, it's it's a little soft.
I'll try to speak up. Is that better?
Okay, can can everybody hear Phil? Okay, it seems like everybody can hear you, so.
Yeah, uh my mic might be a little uh goofed up. The debt exclusion, we have a chart that will show when it drops off below the the uh steady state funding that we're trying to achieve. And yes, we did take advantage of some of the debt exclusion that came off. And yes, the finance group did uh work the numbers. But our whole planning process has been very open, and as we get information, we will provide it. Just like when the building costs were up around seventeen six and we got down to thirteen two at doing more work and due diligence. Well, the number got refined to the one fifty number just by doing more diligence and understanding all the flow of the debt reduction and better interest rates that the finance department was able to do on the bonds. The debt will drop below the steady state uh lines probably five years into the term of the loan. But bond, it's not a loan, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Thank you, Phil. Um it's sorry, was it Damon who asked that question? Um does that answer your question?
That's good. Thanks, Tom.
Thank you. Um do we have Jim um Enterni- Enternigian? Did I say that right? Enternigan? Um has his hand up? Um do you have a question?
Yes, can you hear me now?
Yes, I can.
Um thanks for kind of explaining what you just did. I I just, is it possible that we just pretend that you don't have any of the uh debt that's coming off and just say, what would be the number for thirty years uh to a five hundred thousand dollar house? If you didn't have any of that other debt coming off. For me, it's like more black and white than this one's coming off, you know, and this one's coming off in five years or whatever it is. And just just for to compare apples to apples rather than apples to everything else. Is that possible, the rough number on what that would be? If we were just starting from just this project?
Well, not not exactly. It's it's difficult because the rates change from year to year and depending on what the rest of your debt is.
Hmm. Okay. I think that's where the fellow before me was kind of going to, but uh well, seems to.
I I the 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 problem with 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 coming up with those kind of numbers is if you if you explain it the other way, then people get upset because that isn't really what the impact is. From doing this quite a few years, uh what people normally want to know is, you know, I I have I have money um coming out of my mortgage payment, you know, and I send to the bank that goes into an escrow to pay my my real estate taxes. And what I need to know from year to year for the people who are doing that, exactly how much is my monthly payment going to go up if this passes? And that seems to be the most important number that we 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 give to people. So that's why um that's the most that's the most accurate piece of information. I know what you want to know. I mean, I guess what you what you could do is you could figure out, um you know, we're talking about thirteen million dollars, divide it over um all of the different uh folks that pay taxes and and you know how much it's going to cost. But see, the rest of that story is that as time goes on, every year we have new growth, which means every year we have new people that move into town and more houses. And it it changes from year to year. So there's a lot of different ways you can look at it and the most straightforward way is to to break it down. Look, this is this year, you know, we're paying X amount of dollars. And if you have a house that is assessed at a half a million and and you know, if you don't, if you're not sure, um you know, assessed value is not appraised value, right? So the best thing you can do is for those that aren't sure of it, take a look at your tax bill. And you can see it's usually split into half, the land and the structures. And you look at exactly what, you know, so you can gauge it for yourself. But the actual assessed value of a particular piece and property, piece of property, uh their tax bill next year as compared to what it is this year, um it's going to go up uh for the whole year, um a hundred and fifty, a hundred and fifty bucks, which means it's about thirty-eight dollars a quarter. Um so that's the the best, the most accurate piece of information I could give you, and that's only for this year. Um typically, the impact over time, it will lessen because there are more people that move into town. There's new growth with new buildings, new structures. So it tends to drop off over time. So.
Thank you.
Sure. All right, thank you. Any other questions on this? And and again, I don't want, what I don't want to do is is we can debate the merits of the article at town meeting, so um and also, you know, I know different groups will have different presentations that might um illuminate some of the questions you might have. But any questions on, yes, Phil?
Tom, just to to highlight, we'll do a a presentation which will go into a lot of a lot of the details around this, short, but a lot of the details. Hopefully answer a lot of the questions. Uh and then also have a Q and A session, of course, uh because there are questions around this. And I think it's the largest article on the largest article in in the form of activity and interest. So we're going to try to provide a presentation along with the architect. And Dave and I, uh the police chief and I, the architect, we the primary presenters, but our our whole team will be there to support it. Questions?
Thank you. Um sorry, uh Jim, is your question answered?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, okay. I just saw your hand was up. I didn't know if you were putting it back up or if it just is still up. Um any other questions on this article for tonight? I'm sure we'll have some lively discussions in a couple of days, but all right. All right, if there's no other questions, I'm going to move on to Article twenty-two, um transferring twenty thousand dollars from free cash to purchase and install a generator to support the legacy senior center. I'm assuming the legacy senior center is the current senior center, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Um I mean, I think that's pretty self-explanatory. Any questions about that? All right, we're gonna move on to twenty-three. Um this is a community preservation article to transfer two hundred eight thousand dollars um to install two pickleball courts, a bocce court, a basketball court, two shuffleboard and two shuffleboard courts at the proposed new senior community center at Three North Ave. Um and now let's say that the um article fails, that the prior article about constructing the new um senior community center. What would happen with this article?
We'll just pass over it.
Okay. All right. So I mean, so this this is mine to just add to the to the community center itself. Um Damon Dowell has a question?
Just to confirm, it's same same comment Ann on twenty-one or twenty-two, whichever it was, is if the senior center passes, I would assume we'd pass over the generator article.
Um, no, we wouldn't. We we wouldn't pass over that one because um whether whether that um whether the new senior center is over it, you know, passes or not, the existing senior center is still a town building um that needs the generator replaced.
The the interesting point in this too, Mike, is that the senior center existing in future is the uh emergency shelter center for the town.
Exactly.
So we need a requirement of having an effective generator. The current generator needs to be replaced.
Right.
So.
It's not what was said in that.
We couldn't, we don't, we can't, we don't have an emergency shelter without it. But we would need to fix it.
Okay. All right, um does that answer your question, Damon?
Sure.
Okay. All right. Mike Goddard has a
It is just to clarify on the um the generator, um what I heard is all, uh there is the possibility we do not expend the funds to, I think, Damon's question. If the senior center were not to pass, we need a generator for the legacy senior centers, such as emergency shelter, as Phil mentioned. If we do adapt a reuse on that building, which is currently the plan, we've allocated some money to look at the legacy senior center for reuse, possibly for public works, highway, et cetera. There may be a determination that a generator would be needed for that work. If not, those monies would not be expended. You'd see be voted back to um the general fund at a later date. So those are probably the three scenarios for that article, Tom.
Thank you. Um hopefully that that provides some clarity.
Yeah, that was the that was what we had heard earlier, the that last scenario, that there was the potential that it would go back.
Okay, yeah.
Thanks. Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you. Um okay, um so, so yeah, we just talked about Article twenty-three. We kind of jumped back to Article twenty-two. Any any comments on Article twenty-three questions? Article twenty-four, um three thousand five hundred dollars from CPA to high engineering design walking loop trail from Three North Avenue to Twenty Milford Street to Thirty-One Brookview Lane and a separate loop trail, one one thirty-one North Ave to one oh one North Ave to Hope Dale Conservation Areas. So um to be clear, it, I'm just trying to visualize. And so um Three North Ave to Twenty Milford Street, that's the that's the the conservation land that's it's in the middle of the town property that we just talked about um over.
Yep.
Over uh off of Route sixteen.
Right, and it goes along Muddy Brook. And then there's another kind of piece of open space that we're still trying to contact um this association that owns it. And so it would go into that property and then come back, but um what if the senior center, community center is built, it would start from there. And that's why it would be really nice to have some, either way, it'd be nice to have ADA compliant um paths for part of it.
Now, we're talking Hope Dale Conservation area areas. Is that the parkland?
It's not the parklands. It's another um uh another area that they have preserved. And it abuts, it is directly abuts Mendon.
Okay.
And the Vander Soos property.
Thank you. And the Vander Soos Park property over on North Ave.
Uh one oh one North Ave.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Um any questions on this one? Okay. Um twenty-five sixty-three thousand five hundred dollars to fund, design, excavate, purchase disc golf equipment installation of a nine-hole disc golf course. Now, my first question on this is um is there a specific um piece of property cited for this?
We're looking at seventy-five, seventy-three and seventy-five Providence Street right now.
Okay. Um so that is seventy-three, seventy-five Providence Streets, where is which property?
It's the old paddock property and the town owns it now.
Okay. So so this is similar to an article that was at a prior town meeting, but this time there's actually a specific way, a piece of land in mind.
Yeah, and also um CPA administrative funds were used to um look at three different sites to see which the best site would be. Um because people wanted more information the next, for the next time it was brought up. And so that's been done. And there'll be a little presentation on this also.
Perfect.
From, yeah.
Thank you. Um any questions on this? All right, if not, I'm moving on to twenty-six. There's also CPA um fifty thousand dollars from CPA budget reserve for lighting the tennis and basketball courts at Twenty-Nine Millville Street. So that's over, that's the uh memorial part, correct?
Correct.
Um so that's just for the lighting of the tennis and basketball courts coming from community preservation funds.
Mm-hmm. Trying to coordinate it with um the lighting that's going to be put on the fields because um it would be more cost efficient to to do it at that time.
Thank you. Any any questions? All right, twenty-seven, three thousand dollars for fragmites removal at Meadow Brook Woods. Um what are fragmites?
Yeah, it's fragmites. And it's um non-native invasive weed that spreads really fast. And we found a small patch of it in the pond, a little like on marsh area in Meadow Brook Woods. And so we just want to remove it before it gets big the spreads.
Thank, thank you. All right, um tell you questions on this other than what fragmite is, is my own question. Now I know the name of it. Um so that's great. I can actually say at town meeting on Friday and embarrass myself. It's just good to embarrass myself now. Um all right, moving on, twenty-eight, five hundred thousand dollars to subsidize an affordable housing project at Fifty-Two Providence Street. Now, Fifty-Two Providence Street is the building we're referring to as the legacy senior center, correct?
No, it's next to it. It's a property. It's, yeah, it it's seventy acres. Um and there's a three-acre parcel that we're been working for several years to try to get some affordable housing on it. And um an RFP went out and um the deadline is May seventh, so we'll see if anybody submitted um proposals. But affordable housing, um you know, developers don't make it, don't build it because it's not a moneymaker. And so you have to subsidize the projects. And so there's a an affordable count, affordable housing account in the CPA funds that has about eight hundred thousand dollars in it, and it can only be used for affordable housing. And so this is to set aside the funds in case one of the proposals needs some subsidy. And then if there's no proposals and it doesn't go forward, it just go back in the CPA account.
Right, thank you. Any questions on that? Nope, okay. Um twenty-nine, another CPA one. Um one point eight million. Uh transferred with sixty thousand from open space and one point seven million from the undistinguished fund balance to purchase a conservation restriction on two hundred one acres plus. Um, and there's a lot to this um motion. Um could you just describe which property it is? No, and
Um it's.
From Wendy?
Sure.
Wendy, go ahead.
I think you're muted.
Hmm. We can't hear you.
Oh.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, I'm sorry. I I just wanted to get my hand raised. I know you didn't finish reading it, but I I was just curious about all this entailed because I think this is in regards to a water source behind my house that was um drilled earlier um well, in April. And I'm just not really sure like what that entails and um if that's what if voting yes to this will allow that pumping station or some kind of station to go through. So I'm just looking to find out more details about this particular one.
Sure. This is not the same property. This is different. Um it's it's um on the other side of um, I think Millbrook. I think what you're, the parcel you're talking about is um off of Providence Road. This is off of Fair Road. And it's um two hundred acres. Um and the reason the article is so wordy is that we're going to, we're planning to write a um grant, a state grant, and they require all this language. And um the reason it it has, the the project would cost one point eight million, but we um plan to get um reimbursed for part. But um because the the grant is reimbursement grant, you have to put aside the But because the, the grant is reimbursement grant, you have to put aside the 1.8 million and then get reimbursed. And so that's why it's at that. So this, this area, it's their road, it's off of Bates Street, it's, um, 200 acres. And it's, 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 um, Mass Audubon actually contacted us about it because it's really rich in, um, a real rich wildlife habitat. And because of that, the nature conservancy has committed six hundred thousand dollars for the, towards the project, and Audubon has committed 200,000 towards the project. And the grant that we would write would hopefully be another 500,000 dollars. And so the plan would be to use 500,000 dollars of the community preservation funds. The reason that this property is really important is, you know, besides the physical beauty of it and the wildlife habitat, it is on top of a watershed that holds the, the largest aquifer in Menden. And this aquifer field feeds many of the wells in Menden, and because of it being open space and trees, it cleans the water and keeps it clean, filters it. We did, Mass Audubon paid for an appre, a professional appraisal, and it determined that at least 43 houses could be put on this property. Clearcutting to build a subdivision, lawn fertilizers, pesticides, and impervious surfaces would be very detrimental to this aquifer that, like I said, many people's wells are getting water from. So it's a, it's a real important property for many reasons. But I can answer questions, there's going to be a presentation at the town meeting, but.
It sounds, we're going to get away from advocating for it, but thank you for, for clarification on what the, the grant issue and, and the monies coming in. Any other questions on this?
Can I just ask a general question? What is the trigger for town meeting versus the election?
I can, I can.
Meaning like the, um.
I can speak to that.
Just on this in the general, and, and I think to myself, like, you know, you answered the question earlier, Anne, about how much money we had in CPA funds and the fact that this would be CPA funds, so it's not like, you know, this is maybe the purpose of CPA fund, of CPA funds, and I feel like at town meeting, you have the chance to have a smaller group of people who may or may not have X agenda. And where, versus the, you know, the opportunity for the entire town. So it's just a question.
So.
Yeah, so I, I can, I can answer that. Because I think you're talking about having a ballot vote.
Yes.
And a ballot vote comes up, if you don't have the money, we have the money for this. You know, in the CPA account, so we don't need to go to a ballot vote.
I'd, I'd also like to add additionally, so Damon, all, the other, the other piece of it is all money that, that's expended, you, you know, this, as Anne just said, like, this is money that's already sitting in an account. This isn't money for raising it. Like, we don't have to raise the money through debt exclusion or anything like that. The legislate, the town meeting isn't just the general public, it's also considered the legislative body of the town. So it's kind of like when Congress or the State House votes to, to prepare a budget for, for the federal or state government, what we're doing, we're preparing a budget for the town and by law, the legislative body is the one that has to appropriate it. So we're doing, we're transferring money from various sources, that, that has to go in front of, in front of town meeting. But in order to in order to, you know, raise additional funds that might not be there, then it has to pass both the legislative and it has to go for, in front of a referendum per state law. So it's really, it, it's a matter of, it's a matter of the state law governing this. Theoretically, they could put these items in front of the town, but they would have no legal teeth. Like, the town voting, no, would, would have no effect on say, how town meeting would vote. It just, it has to go in front of a town meeting per state law.
But can it go on ballot after town meeting?
It can, but the, 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 I mean, theoretically it can, but it would have no legal bearing.
Okay.
It would just be kind of, uh, kind of a, a test of the temperature, if you will.
Um, all CPA projects, though, do have to come before a town meeting. It's not just a committee that spends the money, so it always has to come to town meeting.
Right.
I think Wendy has a question.
Yep.
You're muted.
Oh, Wendy, you're, we're not hearing you.
Wendy, you're muted.
Sorry, thought I didn't fix that, sorry. So I know you said that this pertained to Thayer Road, but on the document, it does also list 192 Providence Street. So is this article only solely in regards to conservation and has nothing to do with building a, a water station?
Yes, absolutely. And the 192 Providence Road is, it's still on the other side of Millbrook, but like, it's backland, and so the assessor just picks a road to put it and it was kind of closest to Providence, and so that's why it says Providence, yep.
I appreciate the clarity on that. Thank you so much.
Okay, any other questions on this article? Right, if not, we're moving on. So this article, Article 30 is to move to amend the met, town Menden zoning map, which was amended on May 3rd, 2021. It changed the zoning district in which 3 Bates Street is located partly or completely in Highway Business District 2 in the rural residential district. This is actually a citizen's petition. So as a citizen's petition, it has to be placed on the town, that got the sufficient amounts signatures as we placed on the town meeting warrant as written. I'm assuming there is a map that goes with this. Okay, I don't have the map handy, but I can say it, it's one property that was sort of placed in the Highway Business District. This is to take it out of that district, it was placed when the, when the, the district was expanded. And it was, I, I think I think not meant to be on there. So I think this is just to sort of correct it or take it out, but it's affecting one property. It was made via citizen's petition. Any questions on that? And there should be a, the, the map should be handed out as part of the discussion on, on Friday.
Tom, Eric Hodge here.
Oh, hey.
This is my article. Do, do I need to get fresh copies of the map to, to you or Ellen?
If you could get, if you could get me a copy of, of the map, how it's being changed, that would be awesome. Get that.
We don't have, we don't have one of how it's being changed too. We have copies of demonstrating that the, the discrepancies in what it was prior.
Okay, is that? Second here, because.
Eric, I, I think as long as you get whatever map you have to, to, um, to Tom and actually Dan Byer, because he's going to be kind of taking care of the AV and getting it up on the screen. You can just have, have a starting point to be able to explain to everybody exactly. And if I'm not mistaken, this is, this, this had to do with, with resolution and scanning, and I mean, it was, it, that property was never supposed to be in the highway district. It just was in the process of scanning and converting it over to digitally. It just, the, the, the line just ended up in the incorrect place. So we're just trying to fix it back to where it was, right?
So my, um, you know, generally when we have a zoning article like this that refers to the map, we, we like to have either a description or, or a map itself, and this describes clearly me one particular property on the zoning map, so I think.
Correct.
We think that should be sufficient. I mean, if we did have a fresh map with that, that removed, and, and I think that would be, you know, gravy. But I, I do see, you know, this, the motion does clearly delineate one property and clearly delineates what the, um, the districts are, so I, I think that should be okay.
Yeah, I think, you know, from my perspective, you know, should the town vote to support this, my preference would be that it's reflected in text as, you know, the entirety of, of 3 Bates Street rather than, you know, my, my own edited map. Because, you know, I feel like that would probably be less accurate than the textual description, but, uh, I'll defer to all your experience.
Okay, thank you. Any questions on this? Right, if not, moving on. Article 31 is another planning article. This one is actually a map. So I am going to pull that up. So here is the map. So what this is going to do is add a groundwater protection overlay district to the town. This, this is, as an overlay district, this this would go basically over the top of other zoning districts. Pulling up, there's, there's text with this as well. So the, basically to to bring the town in line with some, some federal and state regulations, we need to basically basically put some regulations in place to protect groundwater from runoff from various different projects. And what this would do is essentially pu, put protections in place that protect aquifers, a, among other things, from, from different things, like it, it describes automobile graveyards from discharges from industrial sites, that sort of thing. And these not going to go through the entire thing here, but this is all available on the town website. It will show the changes within that area that I just showed. But it, it will just basically require some more regulations on that piece of property, uh, on, on that part of town to protect groundwater. And nobody from the planning board is here to, to talk, to speak to it, so I will let them speak more to it on, um, on Friday.
Tom, if I can just interject quickly. This, the, the previous speaker, I think Wendy, you were asking about some, some testing that was being done. There's an area that, that this involves, or, or down on Providence Road, which what we're told is some of the cleanest, purest water that has ever been discovered. And that exists right now within the Commonwealth. And our, our water department, you know, one of our, one of our elected members of the Water Board, Vinnie Roy, you know, is actually the water operator in Sudbury. And we were talking about the fact that we don't have this bylaw in place, and we need to do this to protect this natural resource. So this is something that, although it doesn't specifically involve just what you're asking about, it actually is the discovery of that and the realization that we don't have something in place yet. And we're going to remedy that by putting this overlay district in place so that we have some state and federal laws that are going to protect this. So that's
Perfect.
what it is.
Thank you. Any other questions on this? As I said, we can, I'm going to let the planning board speak more to this on, on Friday on what the actual specifics are. And, and there's also a copy of the, the proposed bylaw on the website, and will also be given out on Friday as well. Okay, next. A vote. Article 32, move the town will vote to accept Pond Street. So it's just, um, whenever there's a new street in town that's built, or as part of a development, the town would need to vote to accept it. So that's kind of a housekeeping thing. Any questions on that? Okay, Article 33, the town vote to approve $10 million debt authorized by the Blackstone Valley Regional District School District for roof reconstruction and HVAC units. I know Superintendent from Blackstone Valley reached out, who, who, he will be making a presentation on Friday. It's because it's a regional school district. Because the regional school district is, they're, they're going, going to be asking for the cost to be shared by every town in the regional school district. So that, that's what this is about. Again, he has, he's able to speak more to that on, on Friday. So, and it's also the debt approved by the town's going to be contingent based on the ability of Blackstone Valley tech to get grant approval for this. I am, you know, Dr. Fitzpatrick will be there on Friday, so I'm going to any questions about the grant process, whether it's matching, whether the town's going to get reimbursed, I'm, I'm sure he'd be able to speak to that. Okay, Article 34 is to, um, the town to amend the general bylaws, that all citizen's petition warrant articles submitted for inclusion on any town meeting warrant must be delivered to the select board's office no later than the warrant closing date of such meeting. I guess my, my question on this, isn't this already? Isn't this already in place? Isn't that what the point of a warrant closing gate is, that nothing else can be added to the warrant?
Well, no, the issue, the issue is that when the select board votes to close the warrant, that stops the, you know, the select board process and the town department process of putting things on the warrant. However, citizens can put something on the warrant at any time, but we have another bylaw in place that we have to notify all the citizens of everything that are going to be on the warrant by mail in a timely manner. And if we don't put this bylaw in place, then if someone was to say, to come in after the warrant closing date, say the day before the town meeting with the signatures and said, I want this on the warrant, well, we'd be in conflict of, of, we'd be in conflict because we'd have to let them do it. But we couldn't communicate it to everybody in time, and plus, you know, we have to, we don't have the plan, if, if it actually was to appropriate money, you know, we wouldn't have the, be able to do the due diligence and, and you've already got the budget put in place. So this is just like a housekeeping thing to say that, look, you know, we have to have a deadline in order for us to properly work through the process. And a town clerk brought this up to us. We never had it happen, and we don't want, we want to make sure it never does happen. So basically, it's just saying that, you know, no matter who it is, you're certainly free to put an article on the warrant, but we have a deadline, so that gives us enough time to be able to plan for it and notify all the citizens. You know, before, before it gets voted on.
Cool, thank you. Any questions about that? Okay, that is actually the end of the warrant. Any questions about the meeting in general? Okay, I hope to see you all there on Friday, regardless how you feel about any of the articles. I hope that you show up to make your voice heard. As I said, we're here in Menden, we're all, we're all our legislators, so the whole point is that everybody should have a voice and a vote and be able to discuss these very important issues, so I hope to see you all there on Friday at 7:00 PM. And if you have any questions for me, as the moderator, please feel free to reach out, my email's tmerali, T-M-E-R-O-L-L-I@mendenma.gov. Also, always looking for ways to improve the meeting and make it more accessible for people, so please. I look forward to seeing you there, and thank you for coming tonight. The goal is to have this recording up on the town YouTube channel at some point tomorrow. So that people can review it ahead of the meeting. So I hope you guys have a great night and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.